Not joining you, I'm just tossing my stuff.
We'll cut you some slack this time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, it's six o'clock, it's time to start our special city council meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with, do we do roll call for ad hocs?
No.
Okay, please.
Deputy Mayor Wales?
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, we're gonna move on to our discussion items. The full spectrum of issues regarding the $20 car tab fee. Who would like to start it off this evening? Great, thank you. Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you. Referring to the REIT 1 and REIT 2 status report dated April 30, that was in our packet. The first item under Parks, REIT 1, it mentions that the $125,000 will negotiate with new owner, 50% matching grant from King County. And this is purchasing of property. I guess it's adjacent to Mary Olsen Farm. So could you cover that and tell us what the purpose of that is? The expansion?
You know, we typically budget, excuse me, we put money in the budget for potential acquisitions of park property over the years. And this past two years, there's money for the acquisition of what's called the Watts Property. It's a family that lives above the Mary Olsen Farm and owns the canyon above the farm. So it's about 20 acres of open space. That gentleman has sold that property. And so if we intend to purchase the open space, not the portion where the homes are at the top of the ridge, we received a grant from King County Conservation Futures for 50% of the purchase price. That would all have to come towards council should it proceed. But we haven't even had any conversations with the new owners as it hasn't even closed with them. Purpose of the property would be to preserve the Olsen Creek that we've now gotten extensive salmon restoration projects on to be able to go up the ravine. It's also an area where natives gathered, Native American tribes have gathered in Auburn's history. And it's a great spot for education regarding forestry, forestation, and things like that. But there's no project on the books right now to spend that money.
So is the $125,000, is that available?
It's budgeted.
So it's available?
Correct.
Thank you.
Daryl, are there any other land acquisition projects that have been budgeted out of the 2017 budget that we haven't expended?
No.
So this is the only one?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Pelosi?
Under REIT 2, anyway, thanks for the explanation, Daryl, on that. On REIT 2, it has $133,000. Artist's call is active, due 5/24. Can that be explained? Is there any money spent on the $133,000?
No, the call to artists, this is for a public art piece at the Big Daddy's Hurlumber property, let's go campus. And the call to artists, we've contracted with King County's For Culture. They're the leaders in selecting artists. And we have a committee of city people involved in the selection of that artist. The actual call, which was maybe $5,000 to King County For Culture, was paid for out of the professional services budget, not out of the artists, not out of the funds that you're looking at. So that full $133 is part of the artist contract after an artist is selected.
But the money is in, the money is available?
It's budgeted, correct.
Yeah, right, okay, thank you, Daryl.
Daryl, that isn't the streetwalk art that we do. This is a different project. You know how we have that annually? This is different.
No, this isn't part of the pedestal art project that you're speaking of.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilmember Pelosi?
Okay, under the game farm park improvements, $20,000, not started, so that's money available?
Yeah, well, it's budgeted. It's available to be spent.
But it hasn't been started yet.
No, I think it's the first portion of the parking lot that floods.
Well, that huge area that floods?
So we're working with our storm division to repair it in two phases. The first phase would be the first area that floods. And then there's a second area you'd see budgeted in 2018 to get access into game farm park to reach the soccer fields and the other playable areas. Right now, that lot has had a lot of trees grow into the storm drain, et cetera, that needs to be repaired. But it has not been.
It's not been committed yet.
Correct.
The Lakeland Hills nature area, $25,000? Not started, so that money is still same same as previous?
It's budgeted.
Yeah, budgeted.
Chair?
Chair?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay. These funds are all, you know, they're all available. They've all been committed for those purposes. And some things are under contract and some things are not. So they're, for clarification as what's available, could we get some clarification as to what available means?
Well, I think that what we committed means that we've got a contract or we've got an agreement going where we've made some arrangements to...
To actually spend the money?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Pelosi?
I want you, I want you to be more specific. Oh, I'm sorry. I hit the wrong button. I hit that button wrong. Okay. The $125,000, is there a contract on that now?
Which project's the $125?
Olsen, the Watts property.
Oh, no, there's nothing on that.
There's no contract on that?
No.
How about the $133,000 on Big Daddy?
No contract on that. A call to artists is underway out of a separate source of funds that would lead to the use of these funds for the artists.
Okay. And the $20,000? Parking lot drainage?
No contract.
And the $25,000?
No contract.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Councilmember Baggett?
To pursue that a little further, Daryl, is there anything of that $423,000 that's been committed to this date?
Is that what the total added up to?
Yes, it was budgeted for 2017.
If you look at the committed section under 2017, there's a $5,000 and a $20,000 that say that they're committed.
Yeah, the ones that were denoted on the sheet that are committed.
Okay, I see that now, thank you. Thank you, Daryl.
You bet.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Councilmember DeCoursey?
Ingrid, you may be able to help me with this. Last night, meeting, I asked the question related to the structural repairs for City Hall. And there's an explanation, looking at repairing cracks and other structural deficiencies. And nothing's been started yet. I'm just curious as to, do we have a, scope is being defined. Do we currently have a needs assessment? And do we know somewhat what the condition is? And whether or not some of this work is immediate? Or can it be postponed to a later date? Let's be on page 2, Bill, under the facilities, REIT 1, City Hall exterior structural repairs. Yeah, and then we had a note on it in our agenda background as to what that potential work would include. So just need some explanation as to what it might be. Okay, thank you.
So that work beyond the ones that were listed under facilities, the M&amp;O work and the City Hall work, the only one that's committed, as you saw, was the council, the chamber remodel. Everything else has really just been in discussion phase. And what I understand from staff is that none of them are critical that I'm aware of. And so they could be put off if needed.
Thank you, Dana. My only concern would be that if we have some structural needs on the building, that we catch it now before we have failure. Because in some cases, especially masonry buildings, we can see failure. But, so I would like to see as we get closer to it, I know the scope's being defined. But if we could have some sort of a forensic report to what the condition of the building is, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
First page, excuse me. This is under CDPW work, REIT 2, M Street Southeast Storm Improvement Project. Project is currently soliciting bids. Funds are for sidewalk improvements. Can you explain that a little more, please? That's for the $131,000?
Correct. So the M Street Southeast Storm Improvement Project includes storm improvements as well as water improvements and roadway improvements on M Street Southeast between Third Southeast and Main Street. That project is currently soliciting for bids and should be awarded here in a couple of weeks. And so this portion of the funds is for the sidewalk improvements that are necessary as part of that project.
You know, deputy, with these fans going, it's hard to hear. Is there a way to increase the volume, I wonder?
I will speak up as loud as I can, how's that?
Well, I don't know.
Do you want me to repeat that?
Can you tell us a little bit about the Auburn Environmental Boardwalk Phase 2?
I am actually gonna defer that one over to Kevin to actually answer that one.
So Deputy Mayor and members of council, the Auburn Environmental Park Boardwalk Phase 2 is a proposed design effort only for the continuation of the elevated boardwalk to ultimately connect with the Inurban Trail. This was something that in the past, the council has identified that they would like to see pursued. So the council did allocate $75,000 for a design effort. The outcome of that design effort would hopefully be adequate level of design drawings such that we could go out and solicit grant funding for them. So that is the intent. We, as it's indicated in your matrix, we have preliminary scoping underway with an identified consultant. But that is as far as it's gone at this moment.
So is the $75,000 available or committed?
It's committed. And I think, I believe it shows that in the matrix.
So it is committed. Oh, yeah, it's hard to tell which, okay, I've got it.
So when it says all those funds are committed, then we have contracts out on those, all those funds?
As indicated in the matrix, I believe the majority of them are in various stages. In that particular instance, the $75,000, we are in a contract situation. Again, I would emphasize, this is for design services only, not for actual construction.
Yeah. So the citywide sidewalk improvements, $378,000?
So that is not under contract, but it is committed funds to meet the match requirements for the TIB grant that we were just awarded.
What's that grant value?
It's a little over $400,000. So if we don't have those funds, then we would have to give that grant fund back.
Okay.
Thank you. Turning the page to page 2. Downtown Wayfinding Program, $25,000, funds have not been committed. So those funds are available, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The next item, Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, $50,000?
So we have committed to doing several improvements as part of the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program that come to about a cost of about $50,000. So the other $50,000 has not been committed. However, it would impact our ability to meet any requests being made for the rest of the year.
Okay, so that $50,000 is available?
It is not currently committed. However, we would have to stop doing any additional traffic calming programs for neighborhoods.
Yeah, I heard you, I heard you. But that's why we're here, to understand these things, so.
One of the things that I'd like to see is, as I go through this and start to get a feel for it, and I think I might speak for all of us here. We don't want to deal with cutting or even considering anything where there's a safety issue involved. Though we can't cut it at this point, Phase 2 of the environmental park platform issue and looking at Mary Olsen Farm, those to me are real, really, really nice to have, but they're not necessary for the safety and whatever of our community. With that in mind, that huge puddle that's there at the game farm park to me is, is not only a health hazard, but it's also a safety hazard and a lot of other things. So I think as we go through these and continue to refine these, we would like not only this information, but prioritize that this is an absolute, like the one that you just shared with us where it's, it's, oh, it was a slug that we needed or we lost it. You know, those I think we need to keep. But we need your guidance on those areas that are, wanna have, need to have, absolute so that we can make something that we can possibly live with. Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you. Obviously, you've gotten the message already that we're trolling for dollars. And the absence of finite information like Deputy Mayor Wales has identified, we need to get input from the directors. And I think I've mentioned this a couple of times. And we don't want to come in and take any of these discretionary dollars that need to be spent, but we need your input. And this is very important. So dig deep, look where you can find it. We don't want to raise taxes if we don't have to. So please, come forward, bring your information, and we'll deal with these things individually.
And councilmember and members of the committee, I would remind you that we, to do as Councilmember Baggett has requested, we have put together those list of policy questions we hope to touch on this evening. That will help us in that effort that you've enunciated. Just to be able to sharpen our focus, so to speak, as directors. So if there is adequate time this evening, we would certainly like to be able to spend some time on those questions to get some answers so that we can continue to sharpen our focus.
Councilmember Pelosi?
I'd like to refer you to citywide bridge railing replacements. $99,000 and $1,000 has been committed. Is this, like, are we referring to railings like on the Porter Bridge as an example?
It would be like railings on the Auburn Way South Bridge and up on 15th Street Northwest, the metal railings that are not looking very good. It's replacement.
Okay, so they're rusty looking?
Yeah.
And so has that money, $99,000, has that been committed except for the $1,000?
No, it has not been committed.
Has not been committed, okay.
And this is an example of where I would trust your professional judgment to tell us? Because this could be a safety issue.
These are not safety issues.
It's not. And so that's kind of where we really need your expertise, yeah?
I might add, in those particular instances, the city engineer is correct. These are, at this point, not safety issues, they are more aesthetic issues. The bridge railings are in various rust conditions. Typically, you would want to do a maintenance program where you would come in and remove the rust, repaint for longevity of those. But as the city engineer Galpin has indicated, we have not determined that there are safety conditions at this time with those railings.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Citywide street lighting improvements, we have $75,000, 2017 balance, and 25 of that is committed, correct?
Correct.
The balance of that, is that available?
So it's not currently committed. This is the first year that you've had that street lighting program available. So there has been lots of questions and needs, but it's available.
Okay, thank you.
Explain to us the process with the $400,000 traffic impact fees, the flow of that money, please.
Sure. So this is the traffic impact fees that is for the four-block area in the downtown that the council processed ordinance to allow the waiver of those fees, which means that the city actually needs to pay them as development happens. So you have $400,000 currently slated here as development happens on the four blocks currently south of us. And traffic impact fees are required, the city will need to pay those funds. Those go into our traffic impact fee fund to go towards transportation projects.
So that, those traffic impact fees can't go towards local preservation?
No.
It has to go towards?
It goes towards basically capacity improvement projects that are within the tip. And it's part of the traffic impact fee project list that gets generated every year as we review those fees.
Okay, so is there any way that we can take offset $400,000 out of that fund? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
I cannot use the traffic impact fees to pay the traffic impact fees, if that's the question.
And just to clarify, what Ingrid's speaking from is based on state law. Any impact fees, whether it be school, fed traffic fire, have to be focused on addressing growth impacts in terms of capacity building. So it does limit the availability of those funds for uses outside of those parameters.
What are we using our park mitigation fees for?
To refer to the Parks Director.
So those would be for parks capital projects. And right now, we've been banking them for matches for projects in the future, such as the Jacobson Tree Farm, construction of those. We also have been doing some minor capital improvements related to growth with those as well. So some of the projects, like you mentioned at the game farm park parking lot, those typically wouldn't be eligible as those are maintenance, hence the use of REIT.
Okay, so we couldn't use park mitigation fees to do the stuff at the golf course?
Park mitigation or park impact fees?
Park impact fees.
No. Park impact fees are for expansion of the park system. And as Daryl stated, it'd be used for something like Jacobson Tree Farm, new park, new land, new park development. And at the golf course, it's repair, rehabilitation, maintenance.
Potentially, the acquisition that you spoke of earlier, that $125 at Mary Olsen could maybe move from REIT to streets, and then we could backfill with park impact or mitigation. We'd have to look into that.
See, you're too creative like I am. We'd get in trouble, yeah.
Try not to get in trouble, but try to stretch our dollars as far as we can.
See, what I'm concerned about is we, we have one-time funding that we use for park acquisition. We can't get funding from these other funds for maintenance. So we're exacerbating our maintenance problem by getting such a good deal on the acquisition of property. Yes, Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you. Under facilities, REIT 1, page 2. The M&amp;O storage bay improvements and the vehicle bay maintenance. We've got, we've got $25,000 and almost, well, $62,500. Is that money available?
Councilmember, as indicated on the matrix, yes. Other than staff time, no work has been conducted, so that money is not committed.
So it's available?
Yes.
You know, also, because we're trying to do, make some hard decisions, I would, a photo, a photo would have been good for storage bay and bay maintenance. A photo, just a raw photograph.
Just to clarify, councilmember, are you wanting a photo of the current condition?
Yeah, oh, yeah, sure.
I feel really more comfortable with you telling us on a scale of 1 to 5, those things that can go a little longer and those things that can't. Because I feel like in the engineering and planning and code enforcement department, you have more expertise.
I think if any of the councilmembers, I think all of you had at some point toward our M&amp;O facilities, you know how tight things are down there. And these improvements are intended to honestly increase the longevity of a very tight space until such time that we hope to be able to have the opportunity to expand. So these improvements are, well, small, relatively small dollar amounts are important projects for the ability for that M&amp;O facility to continue to operate efficiently.
Good. This is kind of what I'm thinking, and this is just a brainstorm. So get ready to speak up. Feel like we've really looked heavily at REIT 1 and 2. We've seen some things in the area of parks. We've seen some things in the area of MOT. We've seen in traffic and sidewalks. What I would like to see is this similar exercise done. I'd like to set these aside and have each department prioritize them as to ones that would be the easiest to do, those that could be put off, and those that are an absolute must that we have to do because there's contractual agreements or it's a safety issue. And I'd like to see us look at administration in the same light. What other departments do we have that we might be able to? Because what I'd like to see us do is I'd like to see us come up with a million dollars. Call it even for one year, realizing that next year, when we go into 2018, we're gonna roll that million forward and we're gonna then find another million so that the pot has been up to $4 million, which is getting us closer and closer to the $7 million. But I think that we need to look at some of the other areas besides the REIT. Okay, Bob, give it to me, what do you think?
You don't want to know what I think.
I do, I do. You're good at this kind of stuff.
Well, again, you know, we need the help from the directors. We've got to have it from all departments. There are some departments that are discretionary. We know that some of the work that they have going on, I've said this several times. And I think, Kevin, you've indicated that you wanted to come forward and discuss some of these things. I think that's admirable. I think that that would be a start. I think that's admirable, I think that that would be a start. We don't want to come out there and just raid the funds, okay? That's not something that we really want to do. We want, we want support to come from the directors. And if you've got some funds out there that maybe you can defer or put off a little bit, now, this is going to be a recurring thing, we're going to need these funds every year. So, we need to be thinking about what we're going to do next year, and the year after, and so on. So, if you give up something now, maybe you get it next year, maybe the year after, maybe not. But, you know, please work with us on this, we really need to have your support on this.
If I could respond, and I think it does lead to, again, those policy questions that we do have for the committee, but I really think it would help, and I'm going to guess speak on behalf of my fellow directors, to really understand your perspectives as it relates to what I will call one-time funding, which is tied back to the biennial budget cycle, versus a sustainable source of funding, which is, in essence, for lack of a better word, somewhat of an ongoing source of funding that exists, that exists outside of the, ideally outside of the ups and downs, if you will, of the biennial budget cycle. So, again, if there is time remaining this evening, I think if we could start going through those questions with you, would help us focus our energies around trying to answer your questions. I do want to clarify one thing, if I could, Deputy Mayor, just to make sure I understood what you said. When you were talking earlier about setting aside these efforts, but I believe if I understood correctly, you were looking for a similar effort for each department, was that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I hate to just assume that everything, that's assuming that, yeah, I want to see it across to all departments. The other thing that I shared, I gave you my response based on your questions last time, and what I shared with you is we have known for a significant number of years that we have a deficit in that major area that the community can get, cannot get filled anywhere else. It stops here. And so, we need to figure out a way to do that over maybe the acquisition of property and some beautification-type things, not safety, not safety, or not undermining the structural whatever of some of our physical plants and things. And maybe there's some room in administration, what other departments do we have? IT?
Human Services.
No, Human Services, I think, I think we need to look at it, but I think that one's ratcheted down pretty tight. And see that then, after we figure this out, if we want to come up with some policy decisions that will help make some of this sustainable.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If I could just, something that, at the last meeting, you had asked a question, and I responded relative to the deficit we've had in street funding, and I was thinking about that earlier today, and since in my affiliation with the city, there have been several, what I would call major conversations around this deficit, one being the Arterio Streets Task Force, which was in 2007 and 2008. The second one comes to mind with two, two of the major council retreats. One was an all-day retreat that was focused specifically on transportation funding, where we looked at all of the different capital needs of the city. And then, a third was a subsequent council retreat where we looked at transportation. So, this has been an ongoing, if you will, just in my short affiliation with the city of almost nine years, an ongoing conversation piece, and I know it's occurred before that as well, with the city engineer being here almost twenty, over twenty years. So, it is an issue that has been a long-term discussion issue for the city, and it's something that obviously you are all wanting to try to put some boxes around, we get that.
Councilmember Baggett.
Well, I think that Deputy Mayor Wales' suggestion is, basically, we're looking for around a million dollars. We've got probably that much right here in REIT One and REIT Two that has not been committed yet, and quite perhaps, without us going in there and saying, well, jeez, that's most of it right there, why do we have to go elsewhere? We don't necessarily agree that all of these things here that have not yet been committed, we should go in there and tap those funds. The million dollars this year will allow us to go ahead and fill that gap, and then the next year, we would budget for these things. Now, we've got a two-year budget, maybe, you've heard of budget amendments, okay? If necessary, we do a budget amendment. We've got to come up with this money somewhere, and, you know, God forbid, we have to raise taxes or car tab fees, whatever it takes to get the job done, we need to act on this, and we need to do it soon. Otherwise, this year is half over already, and we haven't done anything with this.
Well, this year, we're safe, because Ingrid shared with us that we're not safe, but we have some planning time, that with the rollovers, we have about seven hundred, seven million in there.
Yes, we have seven million currently in the preservation program for this year, given all of the grants and everything else that we're doing, as well as to add an additional million or two million or whatever to this year's budget would not actually accomplish anything, because we're already beyond the timeframe for getting it out to construction, for the road construction to happen during the dry season. So, it's a little bit too late for this year, so you're really looking at 2018 as being that first year that you would add funds.
So, that's what we'd like to see, and what you make, and what I shared in my sheet to you, Kevin, was, we don't expect to solve it all this year, and we want to, again, make sure that we function efficiently and safely, and maybe in the reverse order, and safety for our citizens and our employees is the utmost, but come back to us with something that says, no, we can't do a million, but we can do seven-hundred thousand, and this we can build, and this we can build, and this we can build, and we cross our fingers and we plan for the future. But what I'm seeing here is I don't want it to be all on the backs of MOT, and all on the backs of art, and all on the back of the parks, and so, we need to open it up a little wider and continue to search, and realize that we not in a crisis yet, because what you shared with us is we have the seven million for this year.
And honestly, Deputy Mayor, if I could, there is not a crisis per se, it's a policy question for council ultimately, relative to how you want to ultimately manage the operations of your street system for the benefit of the citizens that live here, as well as for the businesses. So, I would just, I responded like that, is this has been an ongoing conversation for twenty-plus years, and it really comes down to, and I apologize for beating a proverbially dead horse, but it's part of my job is to keep making the point that in our, as directors, we look at the world in context of one-time versus sustainable. And so, we're going to keep asking that question, hoping to get closer to an answer with you, where when we are, if you, if the council, you make recommendations to the entire council to set a funding goal, then the question is, is that an ongoing funding, sustainable goal, or is that what I call one-time, which is going to tie back to the, and we'll answer those questions, but you're going to keep hearing that question from us, because it does mean something relative to how we look at the world from the budgeting perspective. So, it's an important conversation piece for me to get answered.
With all due respect, Kevin, we understand that, and we want it to be sustainable, it has to be sustainable if we're going to maintain these roads at a certain level. And that's why we need these items, line items in the budget every year. Now, maybe we're, maybe there's no need to do it this year, but we need to be planning for next year, and the year after, and so on, on down the line, it needs to be sustainable. And that's the bottom line, and it's not just a one-time thing. The one-time thing may appear to be a one-time thing, where we're trying to extract money now out of existing budgets, and not just REIT One and Two, there's many other areas within the budget that we can look at, and that's where we want to see the input. The bottom line here is, it has to be sustainable, not one-time, but sometimes you can build up to it, little by little, maybe, maybe a million here, a million there, but it has to be sustainable every year.
And thank you, Councilmember, and I agree with you, I think that's where we're seeking a conversation as we go forward, building that policy framework to help identify what that is ultimately.
And I think, before Councilmember DeCoursey speaks, I think that's the reason why we set up this ad hoc, because this is just not a one-time fix, we'd like to come up with a plan to share with the rest of the council, may require an ordinance so that we can have sustainability, and create a different type of focus as we look to budgeting in the future. Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you. I have to agree with Councilmember Baggett and Deputy Mayor. It would be nice if this was only a one-time problem, and we could all go away and say, we fixed it. But, as we've heard in the past with the presentations, and I'm looking at question seven here, related to our payment condition index, this is going to be upon future councils, ten-plus years from now, when we go through another process of determining what we need to do and how we need to do it to fix our roads again. No disrespect to any engineers in the room, but all we have to do is drive our roads, and we know what we see. We hear from people all the time about the condition of various roads in our community, and we know and feel, you know, the stresses and strains that everybody has with certain roads themselves. In relation to the current 70 PCI, and we, and the question is, are we looking at lowering that potentially to a 55 or a 60? I guess, Ingrid, my question would be that, if we're getting another ten-plus years out of a 70, and if we just say we reduce that to a 60, does that give us eight years? Can we stretch it to 10? Do we get seven? You know, what happens if we put money in those roads at that level, and find ourselves back here two or three years now, saying, whoops, you know, maybe we shouldn't have lowered it to that level? I'm just curious, I, you know, in looking at the 70PCI, that gives us a good road. Below that, it's not so good, so help me out with a little bit of context as to the levels of 60 to 70.
Warm up your crystal ball.
Also, I think that Director Coleman would also like to speak, I don't know which one of the two of you want to go first, Ingrid or Coleman?
Okay. If, right now, you're looking for some funding to get us through for the next year or two, till we get to our next budget cycle, 19 or 20, I have been discussing with the mayor the possibility, there is some residual fund balance in the general fund this year, coming through, that we could probably take a million of that and put it towards roads, and if you want to do it this year or next year, it looks like we're pretty busy this year.
This year, we're busy.
And then, and maybe add some REIT money to it, we have approximately, I think it was about 3.4 million of unobligated today of REIT One and REIT Two through the end of 2018, at the end of 2018, there's about 3.4 million of each that's unfunded. And so, if you want to take a million there and a million from REIT for this next year or two, and then, in our next budget cycle, we can start, we have some time to plan for our next budget cycle. The sustainability will be the challenge, you know, and I think you all know that. And, you know, most of these, all these funds we're talking about here are one-time, it's one-time capital, and you're looking for a sustainable, almost, it's going to be almost like an operating budget, an operating capital budget, because we, and we need to sustain it. And if it was a couple million dollars, you know, that would be a much easier situation, but when we're looking for an additional five million, that is a large task. And I know that you want us to go through and look at our budgets and prioritize, and we can do that, but I don't think we're going to get near the five million, that's just my opinion, so.
You know, that's kind of my feeling, too, but I think that, I'm hoping that this quest will, and it would be interesting to see at the end of this year, if you had five hundred, or five million that you rolled over from the previous year to the two million, how much rollover are we going to have next year? It'll buy us some time to start looking at the rollover, the REIT, and some of these other things, and then, I think we need to come up with some philosophical or ordinance-type things that the rest of the council looks at to determine sustainability, and we might need to look at, how much land are we acquiring? And some of these other type things, and improvements on things, might need to be held to a higher standard before we commit, but we understand that this, we're kind of pulling the crumbs that are left after you did such a great job of helping us at the airport. So, I think we realize that. Ingrid, I'll let you do something since, okay.
So, you're probably not going to like my answer on the PCI, because it really depends. It depends upon each individual road, it depends upon the traffic loadings on that road as to how long it's going to last for. So, if we go out and we do an overlay on Auburn Way South, it's going to last differently than if we go out and we do an overlay on A Street Southwest, because it has different loadings, different amount of traffic, different truck traffic on there that's wearing that pavement down. The key on the PCI of 70 versus something lower, so a PCI of 70 is kind of about where you want to actually overlay a roadway. As you start getting lower than that, it starts getting to be a whole lot more patching, and as you get lower and lower, it starts getting to be a rebuild situation where no amount of overlay is going to get us out of that situation. So, what you have right now out there is, we have, we have a lot of really good roads, you saw that on the last presentation, in the lane miles that we have that are considered in good to fair condition, but we still have a fairly hefty amount that are in the poor to very poor, and the cost for doing those poor to very poor construction is about five times what it costs for us to do the overlay. So, I don't disagree with the current goal of the 70PCI on an average, I think that that's a good goal, but it's a question for the council on the policy, is, we threw you out scenarios based on a 20-year time period. It doesn't need to be 20 years, it can be 50 years to get to that goal, it just depends upon how much money the council really wants to put towards the streets. And I have one other thing to make sure that the council is considering as well. As we start getting to a higher amount of money on the preservation program for arterials, the other thing that we have to look at as well is our water and our storm and our sewer funds, because when we start doing a lot more rebuilds, we'll need a lot more money from them to make sure that the utilities are in good condition when we rebuild that road, because we don't want to open it up again two years after we've rebuilt it. So, that's going to put another heavy lift on those utilities, which, the way that that's going to impact, is it would potentially feed into the rate study that we're going to be doing this year, and then potentially increase the rates that are necessary to support that level of program for the arterial streets. So, while over 20 years, we need seven million to get to a PCI of 70, is that really the goal that the council wants to get to? Is it over 20 years, or is it over 30 years? Is it a PCI of 70, or is it a PCI of 60? All of those things play into what is that amount of money that you want to try to do and create that sustainable money source.
So, Ingrid, in the context of that, and you've shared this with us before, I know, but we don't keep those piles of paper, you know, or have that in the back of our mind all the time, but it may be helpful, if we have the information, and I'm pretty sure we do, of going back and looking at the roads that we need to have the overlays done on the approximate cost of that work over the next few years, whatever it may be, and then, in my mind, knowing that the ones that need more significant work are going to take probably a little bit more time, and definitely much more money, but as Councilmember Wagner said one time, you know, fixing those parts of the good roads will buy us more time than fixing all the bad roads. So, it would be very helpful to have kind of a, you know, a very short spreadsheet saying the linear miles, or whatever, whatever your context of the roads that we can do overlays on, what the cost that would be. That would help me in kind of decision-making of, do we want to extend this out 25 years, 30 years, or bring it back 15? It would kind of help me better in my decision-making process, if that makes sense to you.
I think we're getting ready to, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pelosi.
This question is for Finance Director. Hi, Shelley. We haven't really talked about yet rainy day funds that the city has. I know that we've talked about this, you can call it surplus money, however you want to identify it. I know that you have a percentage holdback for city operations. I would like to recommend that when we meet next, and when is that going to be?
Oh, it's in two weeks.
Okay, but if you could explain to us... Okay, but if you could explain to us that whole operation of how you look at it through a finance lens so that we can understand that, rather than using the term surplus money or rainy day money, but what is, what do we have set aside for city operations and what is your percentage holdback and all that?
And in addition, I'd like to see what we've received in regards to these REIT funds. I'd like to see them prioritized by those ones that you think that we could professionally and good conscience access and those that we should not touch and the borderlines. And I'd like to see this done to the other departments as well. Kevin, do you, did you get all those surveys back from the group last two weeks ago?
No.
Who else do you need them from?
Well, again, this was the deputy mayor to provide her responses in writing and gave them to me. The, we have not received any other responses in writing. Again, we're not going to be able to obviously have any substantive conversation. If the, if any of the committee members want to share, like the deputy mayor did, their responses in writing, that'd be very helpful. We can utilize that information. So please do and if you want to send them to me, that'd be great and then I'll make sure they get distributed to all the other department directors. Deputy, can I just clarify one thing you said at the end? You wanted by the next meeting to have the, the departments go through and do a similar exercise that was done in the matrix? I just wanted to be clear.
Kind of, but listen, I really appreciate kind of the relaxed atmosphere that we have as we go through this. So bring what you can bring, okay? And I think so far we've had a really, we're, we're trying to work this out together with no, and are relaxed and kind of open and I'd like to, to maintain that, realizing that you still have full-time jobs and whatever. So we're just going to keep working this until we come up with, and this way I think we'll get the best policies. When we're done, we'll have a real understanding of things that we may need to do in relationship to policy recommendations too. So thank you for educating us. Shelley, again, Ingrid, thank you for educating us, reeducating us. I really appreciate it. And if there's nothing else, we need to get set up for the next meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you.